Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the Lackawanna City Council Meeting Caucus for November 20th, 2023. Again, the caucus is the opportunity for the city council to debate, discuss, ask questions about various agenda items, and then we go directly into the regular meeting that'll be called afterward. So on behalf of the city council and the various department heads, we'd like to welcome the public here, both in this building and at home, if anyone's watching. The first several items are administrative, so we'll start with number six, which is communication from Mayor Iafalos who submitted a letter to the city council exercising her right to veto the legislation regarding the ordinance amending Chapter 66 of the city code regarding proof of insurance as a condition for issuing a dog license. As you remember, we did pass that rescission of the insurance requirement, and it was a lengthy discussion that we had. I don't know what the council feels about it, but in the meantime, and since then, we have received a communication, a letter from our animal control warden, Tony Katusa, who voices opinion on this matter. And unfortunately, we didn't have the forethought to discuss this with him initially before we entertained this. And he came down on the side of not rescinding the insurance requirement, and he gave several reasons for that. The greatest reason being that it was actually an additional tool for him to help enforce the animal control laws, the dog licensing laws, et cetera, in the city of Lackawanna. And so after that, I know some of us on the council had a discussion with him, either by phone or personally, where this whole issue was discussed again, and he made some very compelling points. In addition to that, I believe everybody on this council has a great deal of respect for what Tony has to deal with. And he has been very innovative and creative in pursuing and prosecuting his duties as animal control warden, and has come up with various creative ideas and is working on several that he discussed. And to that end, I think it may be well worth continuing with this insurance being a requirement. And if for some reason, somewhere down the line, the council may feel the need to rescind it at that point, we could reconsider it again, or reconsider it. But in the meantime, it would be my opinion that we should just let the veto lie and the requirement for insurance remain in full force and effect. I don't know if any other council members wish to express an opinion on that.
No, I talked to him a couple days after the meeting. Like I said, he pretty much reiterated what you said, that it's definitely more elaborate with this being in place, and nothing wrong with having insurance.
Yeah, there isn't. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm happy to see that the mayor exercised her right to veto in this, as I was the only opposing vote at the last meeting. So I'm happy that Mr. Katusa as well put in his insight and expertise to further substantiate my position. Thank you all.
So can I express a point of order here?
Sure.
According to the city charter, I think you should receive and file this, and then you have 30 days to act to override the veto. So if you then want to let it die, you can let it die, but I think you should receive and file this today.
Yeah, that was the intent.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And then take note for the writing on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on item number six? Moving to item number seven, communication from the division department heads. Commissioner of Public Works requests the city council to purchase a 2024 Ford F-550 XL CC for $68,430.67. Commissioner Kurieck, you want to give us a little background on what the machine is going to be used for?
It's a utility truck. Obviously, the 550 bigger size, we can use it in order to plow. This purchase was actually made in last year's budget, and the funds were encumbered. It's just to back up with getting equipment delivered, bidding on them, finding trucks that we need. It took about a year. I mean, that's the reason why it's on the agenda for tonight. It was encumbered in last year's budget. It just came finally, the truck got ordered, it's in place, it's ready to be ordered and paid for.
So were those funds removed forward then?
Correct.
Anyone have any questions or any discussion on item number seven?
I'd like to ask, is this a permit that we proceed to? Is there any word on the legal action?
The purchase order is done, I'm hoping, within like three to five weeks. So I'm talking with the gentleman. Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, that was a new vehicle?
Correct, new.
All right, anyone else? Thank you all. Moving on to item number nine, the city controller requests the city council approve ordinance transferring funds in the amount of $5,000 for the sale of an old fire truck. Oh, I'm sorry, you skipped one. Number eight, city controller requests the city council to approve the proposal from Sapphire Business Systems to reconcile software and procedure-related deficiencies. The cost is the same, it would be $95 an hour for approximately 150 hours, and the funds are available in the controller's software maintenance budget. For those who may remember, this matter was moved over or was taken up. There was a request for a waiver of the rules that failed. For this item, it would be taken up at the last council meeting. And that actually worked out well coming to this meeting, because it gave some of us an opportunity to meet one-on-one with Linda Hybicki, who was our comptroller. And it turned out to be a very beneficial, at least from my perspective, endeavor since Linda had very meticulous records kept from the very beginning, outlining the communications, the problems that arose, and the resolution of those problems. And so Linda, to that end, we thank you very much for your efforts and your continued diligence in that area. Anyone on the council have any questions or anything you wish to say on item number eight?
If this does pass, I'd like to be updated on progress.
Okay.
Yeah, it does state in the letter that they will report to us monthly on progress. I guess I may have sort of a question that I'd like to pose, but forgive me if you don't have an answer today. How do we prevent, although they're going to reconcile previous records, how do we prevent our system from continuously falling into that same type of issue moving forward? Whether it's a discrepancy from the treasurer's office, which doesn't align with the bank statements. Are we getting to the root of the problem by getting Sapphire involved? Or are they just putting a Band-Aid on the year that we're dealing with?
Well, a big part of the problem is how the information posts in the accounting program, and we definitely need to move away from this accounting program. As it stands right now, as of March 31st, the ability for anybody other than the comptroller's office to post to the general ledger was taken away. So I go through the records and reconcile them every day to make sure they're posting to the right accounts.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that was from '22 to '23? I'm sorry, '21 to '22?
It's already done.
Okay, and then the one that you've been doing daily work for '23?
Yes, yes.
So the gap is '22 to '23?
The gap is August 1st of '22 to March 20th of '23.
Okay, and since you've been diligently going through them day by day, which I imagine to be very tedious and time-consuming, taking you away from other duties.
Correct.
How do we alleviate that? Why isn't that also being looked into? I know you mentioned in the past that the systems that we're using or the software that we're using is not conducive. Where do we go from there?
So far, I've been researching probably 10 different accounting programs. And because of the nuances of our tax collection, those programs can't be programmed to handle that. So I'm continuing to look. I'm actually talking with some people about maybe developing a program for us. But right now, I've got it to the point where I can go through and identify the problems and have them fixed before it's posted. So we're confirming that the GL is correct, which is important for the audit.
I would imagine that Lackawanna's tax situation is not unique. I would imagine that cities, municipalities, all have the same kind of income and expenses and are able to have that reported within a software program where it generates a report and reconciled on its own, or it flags it's not.
What's unique about it is the way it handles delinquencies, where they remain on the books. And the interest calculation and the penalty calculation, depending on the specific year of collection, is handled differently. That's where the problem comes in. Towns and villages, once they get to the tax deadline date, they pass it over to the county. And then if it's not collected by a certain date, the county levies that on the tax bill. And it's different.
Would that be a practice that we should change?
Oh, we can't, we can't. Yeah, towns and villages are different than cities. So I think what Linda's alluding to is the fact that we're a small city or a city. We actually collect school taxes for the local school district. Towns and villages don't necessarily do that. And if the school taxes delinquent, it gets, by December 1st, it gets re-levered on the county tax bill. So after December 1st, you can't pay that bill. You have to wait for the January county tax bill to come up. We can't do what they do, unfortunately. So we're trying to find a program that will answer that for us or make it as easy as possible for us.
So with the current software that we have, is there an IT that we can work with for them to create that special task?
I've been working with them for over a year, and I've got it to the point that it is now, but that's all they can do.
I mean, honestly, we can't have Linda going every day to focus solely on that.
I think we understand all that, yeah.
So we have to think about something that would be a bit more user-friendly and effective.
I'm continuing to look into it and try to find a resolution.
And Linda, any new program hopefully will include training and education for the city hall staff.
Without question. Full training before it's operational.
Exactly.
Does that come with software usually, considering they're selling you a big-ticket item that requires training and requires a bit of knowledge before becoming, before the staff is expected to become fully knowledgeable on how to operate it?
Definitely.
So it's not an additional expense, it's usually already built in?
It'll be built into the quotation. There are other problems with the accounting program that involve the GL and not specifically the property tax component. So I'm looking at something short-term that can address the other issues and fix them that we can easily move out of and isn't extremely expensive, just to try to resolve some problems that we're having.
But that's...
Not now.
That's in addition to what we're talking about here as far as set.
Exactly.
Okay, so maybe that's a conversation we'll have on a later date.
Definitely.
And Sapphire anticipates with their initial request of 150 hours, I know it's an approximation, but given that they already assisted with prior year, they kind of understand the nuances of what they're looking for and are able to target it a bit quicker since they've already resolved it with the past year?
That's exactly right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, does anyone else have any questions or any comments on item number eight? If not, repeating, number nine. Linda, you want to give us a little bit of clarification on item number nine quickly?
Yes, previously Chiefino had asked when he wanted to put the fire truck up for sale that the proceeds from that sale be added to one of his budget lines. So the sale actually occurred, and now we're just asking that the budget line be funded with the proceeds.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 10. Again, the current city controller requests the city council approve the ordinance regarding Ralph Wilson Jr. Grant Award '23, '24 fiscal year for the funding of the youth swim program. A little clarification on that, Linda?
We run the youth swim program, I think, at the Lackawanna school pool. And Brian applies for a Ralph Wilson Legacy Grant. And we don't know if we're going to receive that until we get the award, and we did. So we would like to now receive, increase the budget to receive that grant money and apply that towards the cost of the swim program for this fiscal year.
Thank you. And Director Laxall, you initiated that program, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and thank you very much for your emphasis on that. Any council member have any issues or questions on item number 10?
I guess I would only, I'm sorry, I guess I would only ask, does this automatically assign the program to run through this year as well? This particular proposal today?
We just got, I don't know that this is gonna, it's been in a holding pattern, because the pool was closed at the school for a brief time. They relocated the program to the pool at CAS Park and have not returned to Lackawanna to this point. Just sent in projections for the next grant cycle, which just opened today. And they're not planning on returning to the city of Lackawanna, or Lackawanna High School until the New Year, because they don't want to cram everything in before the holidays. So it's oddly, it's not going to run concurrent with our fiscal year or the school year. It's going to be with, in the year 2024, that our new grant is going to cover. So whether or not, you know, it took them a while to send us this invoice, so I'm not exactly certain what timetable is covered by what. But we put in for the grant, and they figure out how to best, you know, they give me the numbers. I apply, Wilson gives it to me. How they spend it is kind of on their own timeline, as long as they work it out schedule-wise with the school.
Okay, so does it mean that it continues at CAS Park? The city of Lackawanna is not going to apply any of those funds to it, or?
No, CAS Park is kind of a stopgap. Like the Lackawanna kids are invited to attend there, but we're not paying for the CAS Park portion of it.
Right, because it would be a county-wide initiative, right? If it's at CAS, I believe it's for county residents versus just...
I'm not certain what their parameters are once they work outside of the city of Lackawanna. When it's in Lackawanna, it's for Lackawanna residents. When it's at CAS, if they're inviting Lackawanna residents, that's up to them, it's the program to run.
I guess what I want to find out is if the city of Lackawanna does not participate in an open pool program, are you at risk of losing this money? Does it have to go back to Ralph Wilson Fund?
Well, I mean, it's being spent almost to the dollar by the program, and it's all accounted for. So that would be up to the Wilson Foundation. If they saw something that they didn't care for, they could, they would bring it up. And I don't, I have not heard any communication from them to that effect. Well, if there is some sort of a discrepancy or something that they think violates the spirit of the fund, that would have to be something that...
Maybe you misunderstood me. Will Lackawanna run a swimming program this year?
Yes, 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 starting the New Year, first of the New Year.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. Brian, is there an accounting or a recording mechanism to Wilson's grant foundation for this program?
Yes, we apply, like I said, the window just opened today. At the end of the year, we are required to disclose all the financials to them, and you know, so they can make certain that everything was done above board.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item number 11, city controller requests the city council authorize the mayor to sign a letter extending services of Burt Group through fiscal year ending July 2026. Burt Group provides actuarial services relative to valuation of post-retirement healthcare costs. Burt Group provides service to the city since 2016. This is a yearly thing, Linda, correct?
That's correct.
Any council member have any questions on item number 11? Now moving on to item number 12, city controller requests the city council approve ordinance amending '23, '24 budget ordinance, allowing transfer of two budget codes with the development department. And those have to do with, if you look at 12A, the actual ordinance, travel allowances, is that correct, Linda?
That's correct.
Anyone have any questions or comments on item number 12? If not, moving on to item number 13. Communication from our director of recreation requests the city council approve the ordinance transferring unappropriated fund balance regarding grant received from mayor state offices of children, family services for the Bethan Park hockey court renovations project. Brian, anything on this?
No.
All right, there is an ordinance attached regarding the fund amount of $33,000 as an upfront expense. Any council members have any questions on item number 13?
I think there needs to be a little bit of change in the language, only because it states that we will incur this expense. However, the project was already done, and kids are playing on it and have a great, having a great time on it. So although it is true that it is $33,000 from the, moving it from the capital, I'm sorry, general to the capital fund, the work has already been done, and it's not projected to a specific place.
Right, and we received the invoice for that already? Or how is that being paid?
Linda, you outlined with the payment portion here.
So it's already incurred?
Yeah, I think if you want to just change the language on the letter, take out the word upfront and say will and/or has incurred.
No, just for record sake and the preservation of the agenda, it's noted to us that it says $33,000 for the upfront expense we will incur. So I guess it would be what we have incurred in relation to the Bethan Park.
Rick, have you reviewed the ordinance for substance and sufficiency?
Well, I did, but you know, I just approve it for substance and sufficiency based on what the letter said.
Is there a problem with the language that we will incur?
That's just in the cover letter, not in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on item number 13? Moving to item number 14, from our director of recreation and director, requests the city council approve ordinance regarding transfer unappropriated funds, balance for the grant received from a debt which is dedicated to Lehigh Field renovation project. That's in the amount of $175,000. Brian, anything you want to clarify on that?
No, sir.
Has that been incurred? That's been incurred also?
Partially.
Partially, right.
Okay.
Partially. It's a multi-phase project. Some things have been completed already, and some things are deferred into the springtime.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on item number 14? If not, then it's approximately five minutes for the hour. We call Lackawanna City Council November 20th meeting to order pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to everyone that the meeting is being recorded.
We can call the roll, please.
Moplahe, present. Anderson?
Here.
Moretti?
Here.
Sirdike?
Present.
Morano?
Here.
Law?
Here.
Development?
Acting, here.
Public Works?
Here.
Public Safety?
Here.
Comptroller?
Here.
Recreation?
Here.
Public Information?
Here.
There are no hearings from citizens?
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 6th, 2023?
Morano moves to adopt minutes of regular meeting November 6th, 2023 as written.
Moplahe, second. Motion by Morano, second by Moplahe, to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of November 6th, 2023 as written. Moplahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Departmental reports, to receive and file departmental reports one through five.
Morano moves to receive and file departmental reports one to five inclusive.
Moplahe, second. Motion by Morano, second by Moplahe, to receive and file departmental reports one through five. Moplahe, yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Communication from the mayor, Mayor Iafalos submits a letter to the city council exercising her right to veto the legislation regarding the ordinance amending Chapter 66 of the city code regarding proof of insurance as a condition of issuing a dog license.
Morano moves to receive and file.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file. Moplahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five to zero. Communication from divisions department heads. Commissioner of Public Works requests the city council approve the purchase of the 2024 Ford F-550 XL CC for a total of $68,430.67.
Morano moves to approve request.
Moplahe, second. Motion by Morano, second by Moplahe, to approve request. Moplahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. City comptroller requests the city council approve the proposal from Sapphire Business Systems, Inc. to reconcile software and procedural-related deficiencies. The cost is $95 per hour for approximately 150 hours. Funds are available in the comptroller's software maintenance budget.
Morano moves to approve request.
Sirdike, second.
Move by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Moplahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike? Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. City comptroller requests the city council approve the ordinance transferring funds in the amount of $5,000 for the sale of an old fire truck. Sale of the fire truck was approved at the August 14th, 2023 council meeting.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Moplahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Ordinance transferring funds to the fire department repairs to buildings and equipment, 8.3410.0443 budget code for the sale of an old fire truck in the amount of $5,000.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Moplahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. City comptroller requests the city council approve the ordinance regarding the Ralph Wilson Jr. Grant Award '23, '24 fiscal year for the funding of the youth swim program.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Moplahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Ordinance that allows the recording of the Ralph Wilson Jr. Legacy Funds Grant in the amount of $11,345 that will fund the 2023, 2024 youth swim program.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to adopt ordinance as written. Moplahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike? Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. City comptroller requests the city council authorize... City comptroller requests the city council authorize the mayor to sign the letter to extend the services of Burke Group through the fiscal year ending July 2026. Burke Group provides actuarial services relative to the valuation of post-retirement healthcare costs. Burke Group has provided service to the city since 2016.
Morano moves to approve request, authorize mayor to sign said letter.
Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. The city comptroller requests the city council approve the ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinance allowing for the transfer between two budget codes within the development department.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Maflahe, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahe, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. The ordinance transferring funds from budget code 8.3620.464, development travel allowance in the amount of $2,500 to budget code 8.3620.0467, development training/schools code enforcement safety.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Director of Recreation requests the city council approve the ordinance transferring the unappropriated fund balance regarding the grant received from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services for the Bethlehem Park Hockey Court renovations project.
Maflahe moves to receive and file an Act on Ordinance.
Here, second.
Motion by Maflahe, second by Anderson, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance transferring unappropriated fund balance from the general fund to the capital fund in the amount of $33,000 for the upfront expense we have incurred in relation to the Bethlehem Park Hockey Court renovation project.
Maflahe moves to adopt ordinance as amended.
Here, second.
Point of order, there wasn't a motion to formally amend the ordinance. There was a general discussion about a letter that contained that language. Rick, based on that...
I think she meant as written.
Okay.
The ordinance is written.
As stated by some...
Is there a second?
Motion by Maflahe, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Director of Recreation requests the city council approve the ordinance regarding the transfer of unappropriated fund balance for the grant received from DASNY, which is dedicated to the Lehigh Field renovation project.
Maflahe moves to receive and file an Act on Ordinance.
Here, second.
Motion by Maflahe, second by Anderson, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance transferring unappropriated fund balance from the general fund to the capital fund in the amount of $175,000 for the upfront expenses we have incurred and will incur in relation to the Lehigh Field-Dasny Grant.
Maflahe moves to adopt ordinance.
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed, I said that.
Sirdike.
Motion by Maflahe, second by Sirdike, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0.
Adjournment? Before we get to the adjournment, does any council members have, do any of the council